Meeting to order of the Custer County Board of County Commissioners. It's Wednesday, May 31, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. Would you lead us in the pledge, please? Would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Katnick.
Here.
Commissioner Hood.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Present.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper.
Present.
Thank you. At this time, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. First, under old and new business, the SIP pilot project was actually on the last meeting's agenda, so there's no discussion there. And then I would like to add a letter of support for the tourism board that we can discuss.
Letter of support for tourism.
Yep.
Yes, Jay.
I would, under old business, just like to update on the soil inspection that we talked about with septic systems.
In Wetmore?
No, that's for the county's septic inspections.
Oh, okay.
We were going to have, make them buy insurance, and we have a different plan now. I'll also mention about Wetmore and the finances, just for the record.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I guess I got heard.
You did.
Would you like to second the motion, sir?
Second the motion. That's okay. I didn't think it. Yeah, it didn't matter really. I'll second the motion.
All right. And all in favor said aye, so motion accepted. All right. At this time, we have the approval of the minutes from May 17.
Hey, what excellent.
Because of my wife's surgeries, I was unable to attend at that date, so I'll let you two.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes stated as our clerk.
I'll second the motion.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the minutes of May the 17th. That's the end of the discussion.
Just a quick comment. These are excellent. I really appreciate the way you're handling these, Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This time, I'd like to call for the audience introduction, so we can get your name on the recording, please.
Louis Devaney.
Oh, Jackie Buebers for Sentinel.
Sure.
Yeah, sure, party.
Dr. Pittman? Thank you. Do we have any public comments at this time? Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm going to pretty much do the same thing I did last time. Okay? And so I have several areas to cover, so give me, let me finish before any response. First is the issue of this requiring liability insurance for perk tests or septic tests. This has created a firestorm in this county. All of the construction people, the blue collar people, they're furious about this. And a good many of the citizens are furious about this. They see it as another invasion by government into business where it has no business been. So, I'm just going to state a fact. I'm going to advise you not to pass this or make this requirement, and if you do, there will be a consequences at the ballot box. And I'm specifically addressing you, Commissioner Katnick. I have nothing against you, but this leads into my next point. I'm just going to advise you not to do this. It's going to put more burden on the private sector, which we don't need, okay? I'm going to go into my next thing. As you know, politics is perception. And so I'm going to simply deliver to you the perception out there as to what's happened and what's being said about it. The first point is that the commissioners went to Colorado State University and told and wanted or influenced the president of Colorado State University to fire Robin Young. That's the perception, okay? Now, let me preface this. I don't know anything about this Robin Young thing. I really don't care about it. I'm just delivering to you the consequences and what's out there. The whole county is in turmoil about this, okay? The perception is that you fired her and wanted her eliminated, okay? Whether it's true or not, it doesn't matter. I hear a lot of negative talk about you. As we have gone over this territory before, a bunch of it is undeserved. Remember the perception that you were after Roger? You were not. You were his champion. But that's the perception. The next thing that's spread like wildfire through the county, and I know this is probably the sole result, but I'm just letting you know what's out there. Because I don't have anything against any commissioner, but I hear nothing but negative talks, negative talk, was that we had lost 4H for the year. It was done. That Colorado State University closed it down, and we were not going to have that. It doesn't matter what the truth is. It does, but it doesn't. It's my understanding that we didn't lose 4H. So those are merely comments that I'm making as to what's happening out there. You hear a lot of talk, and I listen to very little of it. You know, oh, the next perception was that Colorado State University was mad at you, that you made them mad, so they shut down 4H, okay? I don't know what happened. I don't care. I'm just letting you know what happens. It disturbs me when people run their mouths without facts. All you have to do is look at Facebook. But there is a lot of negative talk about you and Commissioner Hood who I do not know. I have personally no problems with the commission. But as a citizen who's concerned about the county, truth needs to win out. So I'm through. If you'd like to respond, yes.
Mr. Devaney, first, I want to thank you for coming and speaking your mind. That's why we have open meetings, and we encourage people to say what they say. I can respond to two of the items. Maybe Commissioner Hood would like to respond to the other. On the agenda for today is the septic soil inspection that you referred to, that insurance. Just FYI, the reason we did that, it was the weak link in the system of septic system inspection. If the soil wasn't done properly and the system failed, and the county inspected it, and the people who would sue the county because we approved it, but we had no way of going back to the soil people because we couldn't approve that. So that was the issue on the table. And the question was, well, if they had insurance, we could go back to them, if that was the case. Since then, we've spoken with retired Commissioner Shai, and he came up with an excellent solution, which I'll be presenting a little bit later. It will not require anybody to buy insurance, and will still resolve, will remove that liability to the county. So I appreciate what you're saying, and we have a solution I think will be acceptable to all. CSU, the only thing I could say on that is, it's kind of water under the bridge, but...
It is, far as you're concerned.
Hang one second. Yeah, I understand. But it was a personnel issue, and we really can't discuss that. We've said multiple times that we did meet with the president. We explained our issues with Ms. Young, and he's the one who said it's not a good fit. We need to make a change. And that's as far as I'll go with it. Donna, Commissioner Hood can reflect on the status of 4H as we speak now.
Actually, under Commissioner Items, I've got a detailed report. Do you mind waiting for that? That will address where we stand with 4H.
I'm fine with it. I'm just delivering you what's out there.
Okay. And I know there's, there is that, but you also need to know that as a commissioner, I also get compliments on the work that has been done so far. So you're not going to please everybody in this county with decisions that are made by this board, but you do need to know, and I don't know who your circle is that you're seeing, but there are constituents out there that appreciate the job that has been done so far.
As I said, I have no problems. I'm...
No, I hear you. You're here to make the comments.
But you've told me the positive side in terms of the response you're receiving. Have you heard the negative?
Yes. Of course we have. It's been since January that we've been dealing with this.
If I may make an interjection here...
Do we have 4H now or not?
Yes, I'm going to say that.
Just a second. In January, well, February, remember, we did this. We had a meeting one day that this room was filled with pro-Robin supporters, and you were here then. We had a meeting the next day, and it was filled with those who did not support her and issues that they had had. We tried to discuss this as best we can from a legal standpoint. A couple of things I would like to say. First of all, it's interesting that we fired somebody that we had no control to fire. Secondly, it's somewhat of a compliment if the three of us can make CSU do something. We went up and met with the president because we'd been through the district director and had talked to the 4H lead and so forth, and we said, "Look, we've got a problem. We're not a partnership. We're supposed to be." And he said, "I agree." And as we went through the meeting, and I see there's been some other stuff come out, but in that meeting, he said, "Well, it does not appear to be a good fit. Let's see what we can do about it." And that's where we left it. And in the meeting, then decided to make the transfer and so forth. Yes, sir.
So the reason I'm here is that I want this in the minutes. I want these issues in the minutes and aired. So since you have opened that door about your trip to Colorado State University, am I right to assume that you didn't go up there with the intention of wanting them to fire Ms. Young?
No.
But you went up there just to present, "Here's our issues. Can you help us?"
Here's our problems. That is exactly correct.
Now that that's in the minutes, that's all I care about. Yes, ma'am?
It was actually my open statement to the president that said, "We have a problem, and we hope that you could help us solve the issue." And that was the basis of the conversation.
It would help if they somehow that were leaked through to the county.
Well, it's actually, it's been out there. It's been out there. It's been recorded. You could actually go back to the minutes and hear the, hear what was said both days. Our clerk has that, and you can go back on the website and go back and look at that. You know, we can't, we've got two papers here. We can't dictate what they put in print, but just know there's always two sides to a story, okay? That's all we ask.
I have no faith in either paper because I see errors all the time. I don't read them anymore, okay? One's left wing, one's right wing, okay? And, okay, but I just want you to know, I have nothing against you. I'm fine with what you're doing.
Thank you.
As a citizen, I'm here to tell you what's out there. And I think, Mr. Katnick, you've got an uphill battle on the upcoming election, and so I think it would be unfair for you to face headwinds, which are the winds of bluster rather than the winds of truth. So what I'm saying is that I think the people need to know the truth. And I know what you said, it's in the record, and you think, okay, that's fine. It still needs more dissimulation, yes?
Mr. Devaney, I think you hit it exactly on the head. We do not use social media as a means of conveying our information to the public. But social media is used extensively. It's often extremely negative, and when the positive occurs, it seems to not get in there to offset it. So I fully comprehend what you're saying, and I don't know what we can do. I think the three of us have taken the high road and said, "We're not going to respond to this nonsense."
Well, you also need to know that in March, we had an evening session, and this was again reiterated to the people that normally can't not, cannot be here during the day. So we had discussed that in detail again in March, okay? And I'm going to presume that the commissioners here will do a quarterly meeting at night, so we'll bring everybody up to date that doesn't read the papers. However, after public comment, maybe I could be the shoe-in for what I need to address with 4H, okay?
Maybe we should adjust the amendment.
Okay, let's...
No, it's part of my...
I want to thank you for bringing that forward here.
As I said, I have...
And this is not a...
No problems with you.
Thank you.
I'm here as a messenger, not as a critic.
And this is part of politics. Okay, anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else got a comment? Yes, ma'am?
I have a comment. A few weeks ago, a few meetings ago, whenever time flies, you stated that you guys are all going to drive up to CCI together, and that it was in order to save money, county money. And it sounded as if you felt that that was, that those were your only two issues, your only two options. And I'd like to present another option for you, and that is that you drive up separately and pay for it out of your pocket. Because again, perception is that it's hard to imagine that you could drive two and a half or three hours and not talk county business.
I'm going to interrupt just a moment, if I may. Counselor, we asked you what we needed to do.
Right.
And we did follow what your recommendations and suggestions were. And other county commissioners travel together.
Yeah, I know you've said that before.
And there comes a point, if you want to continue to nitpick, you know, nitpick, pick, pick, pick. I mean, this thing, we went up there for a very valid reason. And should we pay our own travel expenses to go to out-of-the-county meetings? There comes a point when none of us charged for in-county travel, none of us charged for travel to adjoining counties.
Okay.
And we've reached a point, and I appreciate you saying that we should pay our own travel. I recognize that.
Just fine.
But as a policy, it has not been done in the past. And it's one of those issues that, you know, it's damned if you do and damned if you don't. Well, I, we'll take that under... Is that, did I answer that correctly, Clint?
Correct. People either believe you or don't believe you, and there's nothing you can do about that. You stated, and I advised you, don't discuss county business, and you've stated that on the record, you didn't discuss county business. If people choose to think, well, you did it anyway, there's nothing you can do about that. But you don't have to avoid each other all the time, and it's silly for you to drive that far separately, as long as you understand the rule about not talking about county business. That's perfectly legal, the way you did it.
And I would ask if you do write stories on this, you quote what county attorney just said.
Oh, absolutely, and I have done so.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Let's move on to the Commissioner Items. Who wants to go first?
May I go first? Okay. All right. First of all, I would like to thank the American Legion Post 170 for the Memorial Day Program that was held on Monday. I really appreciated all the speakers there and the guests that were in the audience. So I just want to mention that. Second, let's talk about the extension program. Both interim positions, Mr. Devaney, I don't know if you knew this, but we appointed Sarah Shields and Beverly Gertz as interim positions to move forward in keeping our 4H office open. Those positions were filled. Both ladies went to CSU and were trained from a Wednesday evening to a Friday afternoon by Jean Glawaki, okay, who was the director, the head of 4H. Those ladies came back, and they both signed our contracts. And last week, our suspension with 4H was lifted, okay? And all that took a process of less than a month from beginning to end, from when Ms. Cardenas resigned upstairs, because that is how that office was remaining open, okay? But we are now moving forward. And what I want to say is, now that both ladies are in place, it's now time to post the job opening for the permanent position upstairs. And that person would be reporting to the title, because we don't have an extension agent yet, but it's what Sarah Shields' title is right now. And that is the CSU 4H Youth Development Coordinator. So both these are interim positions. But Donna Hobby, the HR director, and myself worked this past week to come up with an ad that will be posted in both papers for next week, for two weeks. Beverly Gertz is actually on vacation during that time, so when she comes back, we will have, hopefully, applications to review. I want to mention that the hiring committee will be Sarah, Beverly, Donna, and myself. So we're just going to keep moving along, okay? So that is a position that is paid by our county, okay? So both those gals, right now, are independent contractors on an hourly wage, but that office was out of suspension last week and in process. So our fair is moving along, and that was the goal.
Question? When do you anticipate filling the position that was vacated by Ms. Young?
That is a process with CSU that Ms. Shields is interested in. While she was in attendance in training, she met the vice president, Mr. Swanson. She has had discussion with Jean and Mr. Noble regarding her goal to be the extension agent here, but we have to go through CSU's process, okay? So right now, I know, including Mrs. Young, was placed in Archuleta County, okay? So we've actually moved up two positions. And we're looking at July, August, where CSU posts that position, and then we have to follow their process to fill it. But Ms. Shields is in the interim working, okay?
What's the window for applying?
That, they will, they will let us know in July, when that happens.
I could, can interrupt just a second? I think we have to do a lot of these, I've searched on, probably 15 or 20 Extension Search and Screen Committees. And basically, the first thing you do is to, is to develop a job description. Some of it's generic, and some of it may be specific. And once the job description is completed, then it is posted and advertised both locally, in-state, and nationally. And then you have a period of application. I think some of these may go 45 days. So there's adequate time for people to put resumes together, that the word gets out, that you know you have a position. And then the next step, when the applications are gone through, those usually that's sifted at the state level to see if they meet the minimum qualifications, which in this case will be at least a bachelor's degree, and preferred if you have a master's degree. Then after they make a sift, you come down to three or four candidates usually, so plus five. And then you go through an interview process, both at CSU and out in the counties. Most of the time, and I don't know what they've done up here, but most of the time in the interview process, you ask that candidate to make a presentation. So you see what their speaking skills are, you see what their educational skills are, you see how they handle themselves in front of a crowd, and then also oftentimes, the topics that have been in the past is, well, what do you see in improving this county? What do you see as issues, and what do you see, how will you go about addressing those? And then after that, the county search and screen will make the recommendations, I assume, and I think we are. And then the, the state has the final say on who they hire. But again, it's extremely, and I'm sure it will be in this case, it's stressed that this be a partnership, not just a one-way street.
Do the commissioners have any weight in the decision?
I think, in the past, we've had a county presentation, as well as a state presentation, but I know of no case that I'm familiar with, that the commissioners directly, and there may be a commissioner involved on the Search and Screen Committee, but that is not a...
Do they ask for your input in the decision? So it's them?
We don't, yeah, we don't have that process by them yet, but understand that the partnership is 60-40. 60% CSU, 40% our county. That's monetary.
And there are also a lot of times, in this case, a lot of times you'll give up an evening presentation, so the people in the county, the leaders, the authorities, those concerned citizens, the media, can also have an opportunity to, to interact with the candidates. But that's, that's a generic run-through. Does that make it a little more clear?
Thank you.
And it's a process, I assure you, that will withstand very, very tight scrutiny under equal opportunity employment.
It sounds like it's rather exhaustive.
So, but that's, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I wanted to.
No, thank you.
It's just a, it's a process, which is why it took almost a month to get that office back in place.
There's one other point I want to make, and I want this for the media especially. The fact that we've had a local person apply really doesn't mean anything in terms of the selection process. It is an equal opportunity evaluation. Now, that person may end up being the top candidate, but I want it clearly understood that at this time, there's certainly no advantage to be here. I mean, it's, it gives you knowledge, but in terms of the hiring process, there's not a direct, you know, well-understood that this isn't a predetermined decision.
Okay. Okay. I'd like to continue with my report on buildings and grounds. We have Darren...
Louis, thank you.
Yep. Darren Redman is providing the landscaping service. He's also stepping up to the plate in manning the weigh station services that were done. He's actually was qualified to do this in the past, so he's just getting recertified to do that. And he's also agreed to help with miscellaneous maintenance needs as we need them. The other part of that, that's the outside, is the inside regarding cleaning services. I've interviewed three cleaning services, and we want to start as soon as possible. We had submitted to all of the departments here in the courthouse options on times that they would like their departments cleaned, and I just want to say that there has not been a thorough cleaning here for about six years. So it's going to take a while to bring things up to speed, and we're going to do that as soon as possible. So that means even the rugs haven't been shampooed for six years. So just some housekeeping there. I also want to let you know that we've got several plumbing repair issues at the annex and the courthouse totaling $3,453. Donna and I reviewed these, and we don't have any issue. It can come out of the budgets and allocated where they need, where the work needs to be done, so we're going to work on those issues. Regarding IT, I handed out the 10 questions that were provided by our Custer County Economic Development Corporation to help with the questions on the vendors for the, the project regarding the sheriff's office and fiber between the two buildings. So I have a copy for you if you'd like to see them, and I wasn't sure if Cindy would be here. I have one for her. I'm waiting on Chuck because he was contacting all three vendors. If they can't physically come here, they're to answer those questions so that we can meet and review how they responded, but I've got a copy for those. Regarding HR and finance, we have a workshop scheduled tomorrow with Dennis Hunt from CTSI at 1:00 p.m. Our elected officials were invited, and I just want to make a note... Our elected officials were invited, and I just want to make a note, because I know not everybody could be here, but we were actually dealing with Dennis's schedule, because he's facilitating this tomorrow. And we're trying to reach the goal of having this approved and up for July 1. So we didn't have a lot of leeway with times with him. So I have asked that if officials can't be in attendance, to get your questions to me, so that I get them answered for you. We're also going to be reviewing the purchasing contract and credit card and grants policy. Also, what's going to be discussed tomorrow is goal-setting and evaluation forms, because they have not been used. And understand, for the record, I'd like everybody to know, that the personnel policy has not been reviewed since the year 2010. And 2011 was the last time the purchasing contract was reviewed. With regards to tourism next, we had a workshop yesterday where we were reviewing RFPs that came in on modifying our website and maintenance. We got some really good responses there. And the question is for Clint now, from our group. We understand that currently, the only source of income is from the lodging tax. And a way that we thought that maybe we could get some more income that would help in maybe hiring a person for a period of time that could help maintain that website and put things on. Do you think that we could advertise on the website for ads? Do you think there's an issue there? We've had no other source of income other than the lodging tax.
Advertise on the touring?
On the tourism website.
How would this position be paid? I mean, would that come out of the tourism budget?
Yeah, I mean, we were just talking about this, but we're going to need to have somebody, once this website is up, to answer the questions that come through the website, to continue with social media. But we just thought maybe that was a source of revenue that could help. And none of us knew the answer on whether we could go and solicit for advertising.
I don't see any problem with doing that. I mean, it's, everything is going to be in the tourism budget that we're talking about.
Would come through and just come in as added revenue.
But I, I mean, yeah, I don't see a problem with doing that.
I've been going back and forth with Lisa Rowe regarding the underfunded courthouse, and I'm now playing phone tag with the gentleman that she said that a commissioner needs to do an outreach to that makes that decision. So I'm waiting for his return call.
Is that Marty?
Yes, yes.
Good luck.
Really?
Gosh, I've been trying for three months just to get the funds that were allocated to underfunded to do the window here at the clerk's office, to reallocate that for door locks. And, I mean, I gave up on phone calls and then sent one email. He responded one time. I did what I thought he needed. I sent that back to him, said, "How does this look?" That was a month ago. And then I just asked, "Marty, did you get this? Are you there?" So I don't, good luck.
Okay, well, she, I mean, it took a week for her to get a response from him to say that, so.
Right.
I can become a nag, and I'll mention your project also.
You and I together, maybe we couldn't be nagged enough to get it. I don't know what to do.
Well, I know that Wells is looking, because he just had a comment to Brenda yesterday, wondering where we were. So I'll just become a nag and say that it's in progress.
I don't even know who his supervisor is, because he manages the whole underfunded grant program for the state, so he's got to have a supervisor somewhere, maybe. And I'm sure he's busy, but geez.
I know. Well, that's my report.
Can I ask two questions before we, is that appropriate?
Okay.
So I apologize about not asking on the 4H earlier. Just one quick question. I know that you had said, so when we start to interview for the permanent position that Beverly and Sarah, yourself, and Ms. Hobby are going to set on board, have you considered including either like someone that sits on the fair board, or the FFA Advisory Committee, or the FFA leaders as well? Just because that office person interacts with them so much, that maybe you get another perspective too? And then, there's no outside appearance that, oh, we're trying to keep it controlled inside the courthouse on who's going to get hired?
That's a good recommendation. I appreciate that.
I like that.
Yep.
Okay. And then second, I know that in the personnel policy, and we're going to have an opportunity to talk, but, so, as you probably know, so I, we have an eval system and goal settings that we've already established the sheriff's office when I first started a couple of years From my experience in the past, you know, because I have county employees working for me, and then there's county employees on the other departments, if the eval systems and the goal setting and everything are pretty similar, so when my deputy's either celebratory or crying in his tears because he didn't get the three percent raise, like some other members did, because I do pay raises based on performance, and my deputy's talking to somebody that maybe works in the clerk's office, if they have similar eval systems and everything, they can compare. Do you see where I'm going with this? Am I talking apples and oranges?
Yeah. Well, did you see, you were sent the copies, along with the personnel policy, last week? Brenda, I hope that you were on the email, so if you could...
I probably did.
Okay, if you could look at what we sent you compared to what we're using, that will help for tomorrow.
Yes, I will.
Okay.
I apologize.
No, no, that's okay. And I've got a copy of these questions for you.
Oh, okay.
So if there's anything else, but...
No, that was all, I just wanted to bring those two things.
Okay, no, that's great.
Okay, thank you.
That's great.
That's it?
Yes.
Well, what have you been doing in your spare time?
Not sleeping.
Mine is certainly not as extensive. I was on vacation last week, thank you very much.
You going to show us pictures?
I'd be happy to. We got big fish. At any rate, first of all, no, it doesn't belong here. We had a small issue at the airport. The pump, the fuel dispenser, was not delivered when we anticipated it, and the old one was offline, so we had several days when we didn't have fuel at the airport. And it created problems for at least one person I'm aware of, and we've addressed it through the airport. Chairman of the Advisory Committee and the person that handles all the maintenance out there, and it was actually Charles Vogel's son who had an issue. He seemed very satisfied with the response we had, but hopefully, we're going to have this resolved. Apparently, there's a, and I'm not an A D A, but apparently, there's a site that you put on when you're, have an issue, and they put on the site that said that the fuel system was down at the moment. And Mr. Vogel's son, Mr. Vogel, either didn't see it or didn't look for it, so, but that's resolved, and everybody seems happy.
Was it posted?
Yeah, it was posted. It was done properly, and apparently, it was missed, so I felt good about that. But I did follow through with it and made sure everybody was notified on what the result to it was. I've been working closely with planning and zoning with Jackie. We've had continuing discussions about the septic, and we'll talk about that on Old Business. We have some other issues that, personnel issues that ultimately, we're going to need to go into an executive session about. Other than that, that's really my report. Well, I can add one thing. I was approached by Mayor Steve Laswell a few days ago, and he said to me that he has found funding, he didn't say where it was from, that was interested in putting in a community center for Custer County. He said the most important part would be if the three entities, West Cliff, Silver Cliff, and the county officials jointly went together and applied for this grant. He asked me what I thought, and of course, I said it was a fabulous idea. I spoke to Mayor Patterson at West Cliff, she was very enthusiastic. So the three of us, and anybody else who would like to join us, will sit down probably towards the end of June. Mr. Laswell will be on vacation, and start a discussion about this. He was very enthusiastic. They told him the money is available. It would be great if the three entities met and came in as a community effort. And all three entities, I'm speaking for the board, and I hope we're not out of line, saying that we felt it was a wonderful thing to pursue, and let's see where it goes. So I just wanted to bring that as a, we haven't even had a meeting, it's just a discussion at this point. I'll let you know when the meeting is, if you'd like to attend.
Just to add to that, the one o'clock meeting, the DOLA meeting, the scope of the work that was done last year, part of that was looking for a community building, so...
I knew that. And I asked him specifically, was it DOLA? He said that was part of it. But he didn't really go into a lot of detail. It was at another fum, it was at the concert in the park on Sunday. So we didn't get into a lot of detail, but he brought it up, I thought it was a wonderful idea, and I brought it to the mayor of West Cliff. I just wanted to just plant that seed, and, you know, we'll get everybody's input when the time comes.
I don't mean to throw water on your idea, but I think the Wetmore Community Building started with a very similar statement. So we want to be damn sure when we do this, as we go forward, that we do have funding and we do have, you know, here where are the issues?
Yes, like, fair enough. We're going to talk about Wetmore in a minute now.
No, what I'm saying, in terms of, you know, that was where we looked at the fairgrounds. We want some kind of a building out there. And that was kind of a topsy-turvy thing that really didn't come about. If we look at the senior center in Silver Cliff, I'm kind of embarrassed, but it's better than nothing.
Right.
So as we go forward, I think it's a good idea, that I'm going to be somewhat cautious.
And I think that's absolutely appropriate. But if we don't dream, we don't get anything. So let's give it a shot, see what happens.
What else?
That's it.
Okay, first of all, I apologize for not being at the meeting in Wetmore. My wife, we'd had that scheduled for some time, had two cataract surgeries a week apart. You know, those of you who have ever been through that procedure, you know you go the day before, you go the day after, you go the day after, and you go a week later. So, she was having surgery the days that we were in Wetmore. I had some busy things going on. Probably the biggest one that I had was the Mountain Connect Conference, Building Sustainable Communities Through Smart Networks. This was a, basically, had a national flavor to it. It was a state focus, but we had a lot of speakers from out of state. And to give you an idea, Charles Vogel, Dale Mullin, Wilson Jarvis, and myself went to the conference. And from Monday morning until Wednesday night, we had a total of fifty-two presentations. And we split up for a lot of these, so we were in different ones. Some, there were two of us in the same presentation. Covered a lot of material, some stuff good, some stuff I'm not sure I agree with totally, but it was certainly a, kind of like drinking from a three-inch fire hose. Some of the presentations were extremely technical, other parts of the presentations were very much generic and aimed at the local levels. We talked about various activities across the state, and also some international, or some national possibilities. I also, on the morning, this conference started on the 22nd, but that morning, I had a meeting with CDOT, Department of Transportation, or the Regional Advisory Committee. We spent about two and a half hours in fair play, going over issues and challenges and opportunities and so forth. Two things that are going to happen, and Kit had announced it last year, and I'll announce it again this year, starting, it'll be in 2018, the CDOT has planned on the construction part of the program, to pave bases, I understand it, from about the airport to the county line, to resurface it. And then they are also going to go from the county line into Walsenburg. I think that's about twelve or fourteen miles. But it's on the calendar, the funds are coming, it's going to be something we're going to do. Some issues that I raised with these folks that I think were very important. First of all, I ask about the traffic sign out here. And we really don't have a way that we can slow the speed down. I thought I was rather short-sighted on their part, in that we said, "Well, we have to do a traffic study, and we have many fatalities, so therefore, we're not sure we can lower the speed limit from forty-five miles an hour to twenty." As we did earlier, "Well, maybe we can put a turn lane in." And, well, we don't know what we can do. But I continued to question that, because I think it was very important. We've talked about that, Sheriff. I'm really concerned that we not kill somebody out there. In the meantime, just so we've got a statistic that the state can take and go forward. I also raised a question, and I'm trying to find my notes in here, about the, let's see, that was one of them. Also about the paving. I was, I told them I was surprised that we had a crew out here on Ninety-Six, all of a sudden showed up one day, and they were resurfacing the blacktop across the bridge and had to, towards the cradle of turnout. I'll come to find out that was maintenance. Maintenance and construction don't talk, they're two different entities. So construction knew nothing about it, but maintenance did. Anyway, I also raised some questions about where is the internet along the interstates, I mean, along the state highways? They do have some internet hookups. You see a sign that comes down and says, you know, "Crash ahead," or "Rocks on the road," or whatever, the big signs that flash, those are connected via fiber. The little ones you see that just flash, and they've got a little charger on them, well, those are not connected. So we do have some fiber, at least coming a little way south, excuse me, east of Salida. Trying to think what else I had here now. As I stumble through trying to find my notes from that meeting, I'm not finding them. Talked about the bridges. I indicated that I was, we talked as a county, we wanted to be aware when they were here to inspect the bridges, so we had an idea of what we needed to work on, and what the deficiencies were. And they said, "Well, yeah, they'd let us know," but didn't. I also asked at the, from the tourism standpoint, that if they're going to be working on a road and going to be shutting it down, that they let us know. So that we don't have a big event coming on up here, and all of a sudden, we got fifteen-minute delays coming down Ninety-Six. So they indicated that they would. I talked about the truck traffic, and I asked, and Gary Hyde was also at the meeting, I asked that we get the counts. I want to know what met trucks we have going down Highway Sixty-Nine. I want to know what we have on each of our highway turnoffs, because CDOT has that data onto our county roads. And we were promised at the end of the meeting that they would provide that information. I think that's something that we really need to do, look at, to see what the uses on some of our county roads are. I mentioned to them that they maybe should consider some prairie dog control, and they just kind of let that off. But if you drive out on Sixty-Nine by races, you can see where they've had to patch the highway along the shoulders, because the prairie dogs are digging burrows underneath the asphalt. And then the asphalt collapses, and we've got a hole. And that, I think, is about the limit. I also indicated to them that I was concerned that we have, as we go forth with projects that we allow for sufficient bike lane along the sidewalks, along the side of roads. So we'll see where we go. Yes, ma'am.
You said, "Starting 2018, pave from the airport to the county line, is that north from the airport, or south?"
No, no.
Okay, so...
I can get you those exact mile markers if you want me to.
I have that info, Jackie.
And the traffic sign, you're talking about no way to slow down traffic, are you talking coming in from?
Yes, ma'am, because it's, help me out, Shannon, it's basically forty-five miles an hour until you hit right here, which is twenty-five, is that correct?
Forty, yeah, forty.
It's forty.
Okay. Okay. I can see we had a lot, we had a lot of traffic coming up the Herman, pulling out of the gas station.
Well, I can only imagine. I mean, we get a ton of grief for, right, and people take it for going 67 in a 40 through there. If we, when we reduce that down, it's going to have to be progressively stepped a little bit. And the grief comes from the folks getting the tickets. Otherwise, the folks that live along there, and then even to the south, celebrate that we're doing it because of the crazy, I mean, we've actually had an 82 and a 40 that we've wrote, are written. I mean, it's insane, the speeds that people are coming into town right here. It's ridiculous. I'm shocked we haven't had somebody killed yet.
We consider it a very important issue that we do something, but CDOT won't because of the regulations.
I would just say that-
Just a second, Jackie.
That I'd like to see something done going out of town north, because it goes from 35 to 65. And if you're, if you start speeding up after the 35, you get a ticket. And that's no fun. I know. So it's hard to go 35 all the way to the 65 mile an hour sign. Just saying, so.
But on another note, I'm one of the people that turn off the highway right there. And I've had to take the ditch a couple times because people, they come up, and there's another car behind you, and they think, well, why are they going so slow? So they pass, and you can't.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's hard to go 35 to the 65, you know, because coming into town, it steps down 65, 55, 45, 35. But it doesn't going out of town. Just saying.
And I tried, and I brought this up, because actually, I talked to Scott. He brought that up. I talked to CDOT about trying to change that, because I would prefer to see the speed limit stay at 45 or 55 until you get north of the industrial center because of the big trucks turning in. And CDOT basically told me to take a flying leap that no one's been killed there, so.
That's it.
I mean, that's, that's exactly what the engineer told me. How many fatalities have you had along there? I said, well, isn't that the point? Not to have a fatality? He said, we don't have any statistics, then to create a traffic study.
So by next response, and then smart, wasn't it, Jackie? But I am going to visit with Jim Wilson, my representative, and also Larry Crowder, and see if we can get something done from the top down. Because this, to me, is bureaucracy to the limit.
Yeah. Well, and 15 years ago, maybe that speed limit was justified because the industrial center wasn't as busy. We didn't have those. But things change.
What's the speed limit over Cooks Hill, by the shooting range? Because now we have another problem. CDOT put that turn lane in to go up Rosita Road, and people are coming over Cooks Hill-
Use that as a passing lane.
And they're using that as a passing lane. So you get out on that turn lane, and you look in your rearview mirror, and I don't know how fast those people get to go.
It's 65. I mean, it has the yellow speed limit sign that's supposed to be 55, but that's recommended. That's not the speed limit. So it's technically-
But anyway, I want you to know that those are some of the issues we're picking ours on. Anything, any questions, Jackie?
No.
You deal with CDOT.
And then we, to continue this one lane farther, and this is just on a preliminary stage, but Wolfno, Custer, and Fremont are trying to pull together and push to see about getting some kind of fiber down Highway 69 to give us a loop. The cost is going to be high, but we're hoping we can collectively find some ways into the three counties working together, maybe bring some political input to it. And I was visiting with, again, one of the ladies from CDOT, one of the planners, was at the Mountain West Connect Conference. And we're visiting, and I said, yeah, we're talking about this, this, and this. And I said, no. I said, if we put together some money, I said, I would anticipate that CDOT would be willing to kick in some money, because you have it on other areas on your roads. And she says, well, we certainly will in the discussion, I'm afraid getting on. But that's, and that's down the road. It's going to be years before that happens, probably. But that, again, is, it allows CDOT, the signees along here, to take a change, and also allows us a circle of communication. So if we have a fiber interruption, we do have a loop. So that's, yeah.
And that discussion was FirstNet brought up. So for, if you're not familiar, so FirstNet is a new, it's a, it's a new wireless system that the state is going to do. AT&amp;T was just awarded the bid for, it's like $1.3 billion, to develop this new network that's all, so it's a wireless network, but it's specifically designed for first responders. So it's going to replace the old digital trunking radio system that we're currently using now. And what's, what's different about this, and it's what they got all the different agencies to buy into, is that AT&amp;T will first be required to get it installed and make it work in all the smaller communities before they are allowed to do it in the metro area. Because as we've experienced with DTR, that they started with the metro area. They have great service. Then as they got out here, the towers got further away, and we don't have great service. So with that, and the only reason I bring that up, Mr. Koenig, is because when that goes in, AT&amp;T is going to be required to install, you know, thousands of miles of new fiber. And they may actually have to be required to bring fiber up in here in order to serve the, our community, which in turn would serve Wolfno. And so that's just something, just something, and it works.
That's still down in the weeds, because as of, you know, OIT told us at the conference, is that they've not made a recommendation of the governor yet, whether they're going to be as a state or part of the federal program. That still has not been made.
For FirstNet.
Yes. So what's your hearing?
That's different information than what I heard.
Well, this comes from the OIT office. So I think, I tend to reflect, because they're the one making a recommendation of the governor. I think the odds of us going state are very, very high. But he made a point of stressing that, you know, we don't, we've not made that final recommendation for the governor's decision. But I hope it happens. You know, we need this FirstNet, but I'm afraid by the time we wait for FirstNet, it may be 10 years down the road. I hope not. But you're hardly right.
It's a government-run organization, so it has.
Okay. That, I think, was what I had. Any, any questions for me?
Nope.
Okay. Let's move on to the next item on the agenda, then, would be any attorney items.
I have a few things to talk about. I prepared a proposed resolution, which I, I think Brenda may have emailed to you. That's not something that we're going to be discussing today, but I've worked with the sheriff on this. And I, if it's something that meets with your approval, what I'd like to do would be to put it on a future agenda, because it's going to require a little coordination to have some individuals here. And I would ask the news media, there are two reporters that were present, not to mention this right now, kind of like to keep it confidential. But when it is on the agenda, I'd like for them to be present with the camera, so that we can get some publicity about this. So if that's something that looks good to you, then I'd just like to know if we can schedule a date with the sheriff, so he can coordinate.
The topic, it's honoring some individuals, but we'd like to try to keep that a surprise for right here. Okay, that's fine.
I guess the one issue I have, and it's certainly not personal, Ms. gentlemen, but in visiting with the fire personnel, both state and federal, we have law enforcement going into areas that the fire people will not go into because of a safety issue. And I really think we need to maybe down the road, this is just me talking, but I think the Law Enforcement Academy ought to have at least a brief session or something on, on how far do you go. I mean, you guys have very-
We already conducted training with the deputies.
Pardon me?
We had training with the deputies a week and a half ago.
Okay, so you're, you're moving on where we are. That's, you know, I mean, you, they always put the light on the line, and I certainly appreciate that. But when you go into hostage situation, or whatever, you guys have protocols and training to give you the best chance of being successful.
I'm tracking with you, Tim.
Super. That's, I think that's, that's just something that's important. Thank you.
Okay. The next item, the request from Dr. Hamilton about installation of cattle guards. I had a proposed resolution. We discussed a little bit, gave a copy to Mike Halpin to share with his attorney, and the copy was sent to Dr. Hamilton. I got a response from Mike Halpin's attorney with certain suggestions, things that they would like to see in there. And today, Dr. Hamilton's property manager, Marvin Boyd, is actually meeting me here at noon. He had some questions, and he wanted to see the maps, which I, yeah, they're still over there. So I said I would be happy to show him that. So I'm in the process of talking to both sides to get their input, and then I'll report back. And then it may be something where we want to have a meeting with them, or it may be something we can negotiate something, and I can present it to you. But that's where we're on, where we are on that. I did, at the request of Commissioner Prince, reviewed some paperwork concerning the Wetmore Community Center. And he and I have talked about that, and it's something that we're going to be working on a little bit. And then finally, last week, I met with Jackie Hobbie, Vic Barnes, the chairman of the Planning Commission, and Jim Bradburn, the president of Dark Skies. I was there in my capacity, really, as a member of Dark Skies. But we talked about the lighting issue that's been discussed, and we had some ideas. And I've actually, I prepared something, again, in my capacity as a member of Dark Skies, that we're going to see if the International Dark Sky Association likes what our plan is. And then just give it to Vic, so he can submit it to the Planning Commission and see how they feel about it, because it does require some modifications of the zoning resolution. But we would very much still want to have the public meeting scheduled for June 22nd to get public input. And we would have something specific at that time.
What, what time, June 22nd?
We haven't scheduled that. And we actually need to, because I was hoping we could do it at the bowling alley, and I would say 6 o'clock, perhaps, if that would be appropriate. And then we also need to advertise that, in addition to just our regular notice of a meeting.
It's on the 22nd, right?
Yes, Thursday.
So is that a commissioner's meeting?
It's, we're calling it a public meeting. It's not a commissioner's meeting. I mean, the three of you will be there to get input from the public, but there won't be any decisions made, of course. It's just to get the, see if we can get a feeling for the sentiment of the public, because there are obviously some that are strongly opposed, that, you know, we've heard from. And I think there are some people that are in support of it that maybe we haven't heard from. We'd like to give everybody a chance to come in and talk about it.
So is that, is that a commissioner's thing that I would have to do to?
I, yeah, I wanted, I wanted to post it as a, it's a meeting, but it's not the typical kind of meeting where we're going to have an agenda.
Like a workshop?
It's not actually a workshop. That's, Vic Barnes, you know, felt pretty strongly about that. Workshops are different than a meeting where we're just soliciting input. Because that first one we had really was more of a public meeting than a workshop, even though we had labeled it as a workshop. So I think it's, we need to advertise it as a public meeting for people to come in, just tell the commissioners how they feel about it. We'll have something fairly specific, very specific in writing, as to what we're proposing at that time. And we'll have copies for everybody.
So do I need to record and do minutes?
I don't believe we ever, we record public meetings. It's just like a workshop.
It's just like, okay, not a, okay.
Right.
Have you talked to the bowling alley yet?
No, I was going to ask you if you would do that, see if that's available. And I guess that's everything I had to report on. Oh, well, the next item on the agenda is executive session. I have requested an executive session, because I have some information that I need to talk to the board about. And this, under the open meeting law, this comes under the provision of discussing the language, your discussion, specialized details of security arrangements or investigations under Colorado Vice Statute Section 24-6-402, so paragraph 4D. And I have asked that the sheriff be present for this. And I also asked that Donna Hobbie be present, since she is involved in this from the HR part of it. So if there's nothing else before this, then I would ask the board to consider going into executive session. And this would be a recorded session. This is not legal advice. This is for me reporting to you, giving you some information that I have.
Before, are you through?
Yes, I'm finished.
Before we go into that, did you get to say what you wanted to say, Jackie? You were wanting to make a comment a while ago, and I kind of cut you off, and you got-
Yeah, I was, I was talking about, you know, Cooks Hill, the speed limit coming-
Right, but that, you're good on that, okay.
Yeah, if you'll bring that one up, too, that would be great for us.
Okay. At this time, the next item on the agenda is executive session. It has been recommended by council that we go into executive session regarding security issues. At this time, I will entertain a motion to recess the Board of County Commissioners' general meeting and to reconvene in executive session.
I'll make a motion based on council recommendation that we go into executive session to discuss issues of security suggested by legal counsel.
I'll second that motion, esteemed.
Mr. Jay Prince made a motion, seconded by Commissioner Hood, to go into executive session citing Colorado Vice Statutes 246402 regarding courthouse security. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. How long do we expect this to be?
Not more than 10 minutes.
We're back in the regular session. It is 10:34. I attest that I am the chairman, chairperson of the Custer County Board of Commissioners, and confirm discussion remained on topic and that no matters were adopted, no actions or decisions were made.
As the county attorney, I will confirm that we stayed on topic. It was stated at the beginning, for the purpose of informing the commissioners about a security issue. It was not for legal advice, so the session was recorded. And there were no decisions made, no action taken.
Okay. At this time, we will move on to the new and old business. We do have the review of vouchers, which we're all continuing to work on. Have you had chances to review those?
I have, and I found them.
Pardon me?
I reviewed them, and I did not find anything out of the ordinary.
I also reviewed.
Do I hear a motion to approve the vouchers as submitted?
I'll make the motion to approve the vouchers as submitted by our finance director.
And I'll second the motion.
Motion to debate and second to approve the vouchers as submitted by our finance office. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now you can call it, Brenda, tell her that you read the checks. All right. The transfer of funds, we have removed the SIPA pilot project. Now we do the transfer of funds.
Okay. This is, I'm going to say, a few months ago, I told you guys that we were finishing, or not finishing up, but doing another book restoration thing. And so that has been finished, and the bill was part of your bills that you approved today. And so I need to transfer $24,210 from the recording fund to the county general fund, so that that can be paid.
I'll move that we move the amount of money that was just announced from the recording fund to the appropriate fund of payment.
I'll second the motion for the amount of $24,224.
Any discussion? All in favor, the motion is presented. Say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Fund transfer approved.
Thank you.
Commissioner approval of the planning and zoning review and recommendation.
I have some handouts, if folks would like to have a copy of that.
This for the audience?
Yes.
Jay, did you want Brenda to call Donna? Did you want Brenda to call Donna? Or not Donna, Jackie, sorry.
Brenda? Would you call Jackie, please?
Yep.
Okay. On May 11th, I called a meeting of the- Okay, on May 11th, I called a meeting of the most appropriate agencies I could think of. In that meeting were Jackie Hobbie, representing zoning and planning, Dave Tomzin, the fire marshal, Mike Carter, the West Cliff zoning and planning official, building code official, Larry Weber, the past president and building inspector for Silver Cliff. Roger Kemper was advised on all of this and concurred with what was discussed. I also spoke with Dee Murphy, who unfortunately did not respond, and Cindy Howard from Office of Emergency Management, who was, kind of a family issue going on, although she and I spoke extensively about potential building codes in the county. The purpose of the meeting was to decide whether it made sense to even pursue having building codes in Custer County. I want everybody to know that Silver Cliff and West Cliff have building codes, follow the exact same code. It's the 2006 International Building Code, and they also follow the 2006 International Fire Code. So both Silver Cliff and West Cliff follow the same code. And I brought this group together to decide whether this made sense for, for the county to determine whether we ought to move forward on this or not. If the group that I just mentioned to you came and said, you know, this is really not a good idea, it would have just died on the vine right then and there. But there was a unanimous decision that, that from these folks, that they felt that, I'm sorry.
I didn't have a coffee, that was what I was saying.
I didn't have a coffee here.
Never mind, I got four of them now.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, here, let me give it.
Give them all.
You've got two. Here.
Okay, so anyway, so the group, the best of my knowledge didn't appear to come in with any preconceived notions, and what we did was, we, we had a whiteboard, and we wrote down the pros and cons of having a building code in the county. Let me give a little background of building codes in Custer, in, excuse me, Colorado in general. There are a number of counties that do not have, have building codes. Is it nine or seven? I can't remember.
Seven, nineteen.
Seven, okay. Seven counties that do not, the rest of the 68 counties in Colorado do have building codes. The seven that do not are all very, very rural, mostly on the eastern plains. There's really not housing, it's almost all just strictly agricultural. And it's just a little background, it really doesn't have anything to do with what we're doing here. So we discussed, why would we want it and why would we not? What really brought this to the forefront, for one thing, is I've had this vision before I became a commissioner, of a family moving up from somewhere, Arizona, Texas, Florida, I don't really care, walking into a beautifully built home, looking around going, I love the home, they buy it, but what they don't know is what's behind the walls, whether the structure is built properly, the roof is attached correctly, the slab is the right thickness, and these kind of things. Without a building code or someone inspecting it, there's really no way to know if that was done properly or not. We do have, just for everybody's, just so you know this, always in the county, this is state law, the electrical systems are inspected by the state, plumbing is inspected by the state, and our planning and zoning, Jackie inspects all the septic systems, but nobody inspects the structure itself, was the roof screwed on properly. For example, we all know the Junkins' Fire was started by a shed that was blown down. I am not, please do not say that that's the cause of, that did cause the fire. The roof hit a power line and went down. Please don't understand that I'm trying to insinuate that had we had a building code, that would not have happened. But those are the kind of things I'm concerned about. And that's why I brought this together for discussion. And the group decided that, we looked at the pros and cons, and I'll just go through the pros and the cons real quickly, basically for the record, if nothing else. They came up with, a better product will be delivered to the parties. I spoke with many, many of the builders that I could find. Every single one of them said, I'm in favor of building code, just don't make it too restrictive. That's why the recommendation of the group is the 2006 International Building and the 2006 International Fire Code. So we feel that, that's, it will protect you without being overly restrictive. It will eliminate potentially inappropriate, wrong shortcuts that may be taken. If no one's inspecting the skeleton of your house, the question would be, did someone take a shortcut because they didn't have the right piece of lumber or whatever? And if no one looks at that, that might happen. The houses will have a higher resale value. I've discussed this with multiple of the, multiple realtors in the area, and they all said, yeah, if there's a building code and it shows that the house is net code, that it has a higher resale value. A question that come up early on in this, whether this would stop people from being able to buy homes or help people buy homes. And I think I've come to the conclusion, and this is just me speaking now, this is, building codes will help people get into new homes, as opposed to keeping people from getting into new homes. And the reason it would keep them from is because the house will be a little bit more expensive. You will have to pay for the inspector to come out, you'll have to pay for a potentially permitting. If it doesn't need, there's a minimum of three inspections, if it doesn't need those and the inspector has to come back out, there's additional fees. So the cost of the house will be a little higher. The reason I think it will help people get into a house is because the debt to equity ratio on a mortgage will be considerably lower. For example, if you have a building code, mortgage companies are more likely to give you a mortgage at 10% down or 5% down, where if it hadn't been inspected, then they demand 20 to 25 cent down. That opens the door to a whole flood of people who might be able to, be able to afford a home. Insurance costs will be lower, that's just a given, and the big one to me is health and safety. I had a neighbor who had a partial roof blow off. When his inspector, insurance company came out, they determined that it was screwed down in the proper joists, and I don't really understand this, whatever, what is it?
Hurricane blast.
Yeah, whatever that was. Wasn't done, and it should have been done, and had it been inspected, the assumption, of course, would be, it would have been. Also like the idea that this is just an absolute level playing field. Everybody's going to live under the exact same plan. So there won't be any, you know, I know this guy, and I know that guy. It'll protect people who are not familiar with building, they don't have to go out there and say, I wonder if that's right or not right, we have a professional that will come out and inspect it. And here's a big one to me, which may be controversial. Right now, flood insurance doesn't sound like something, we live in the high mountain desert, but go talk to people down in Wetmore. After the Junkins' Fire, as Commissioner Cannon and the three of us have mentioned many, many times, the potential of flooding down there is great, and it still is great. And it's a real concern, and those people took it very seriously and went to buy flood insurance to protect them in the event of a catastrophe that we hope doesn't happen. What was found is that almost all insurance companies, flood insurance, insurance companies that sell flood insurance, almost all of them, I'll give you the exception in a second, do not offer it unless FEMA underwrites it, because it's such an expensive insurance. The federal emergency management actually underwrites flood insurance. The exception to that is Lloyd's London, and there is an agent in the county that does sell Lloyd's London. Unfortunately, because it's not underwritten by FEMA, it's more expensive. So FEMA will not underwrite flood insurance for homes unless the home has had, there's a building code and it's been inspected. So this allows folks to buy flood insurance that they may not have been able to buy. So those are all the positives, health, safety, and on and on and on. And then we're trying to decide, what is, then we try to decide, and I say, wait, I'm talking about this group. What is it that, why we shouldn't do this? And the first one, and I fully concur with it, this is more government interference. When you say, land is sacred, it's in the Constitution of the United States. To own your land, free and clear, you can basically do what you want. Let's weight against, and this is a legal concept that, you know, I'm sure you all know, you have to balance public safety over personal freedoms, and if there's a compelling reason, not just a good reason, a compelling reason why we should do one versus the other, you can restrict or take away someone's personal rights. And we felt that the safety and the health of the folks does, is reasonable to say that we force you to have an inspection. The other cons were, there will be additional costs, because we have inspection fees. There are some people that will not be able to live in our county because of this, if there's someone who wants to build a house out of a tent or cardboard or something, it most likely will not meet code. And the final one was, it'll extend building times, waiting for inspectors to come in that country. So when you put the pros and the cons together, this committee felt that this was a viable time, this was the appropriate time to move forward with exploring and bringing to the public whether building codes should be continued. So at this point, I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners if they will authorize me to ask Jackie Hobbie to review this. I'd like to give her a copy of this document, which of course she already has, she was part of the committee, and bring it to the Planning and Zoning Committee, and ask them in a judicious period of time to come back with recommendations that they feel are appropriate, hold the appropriate public forums, and see if we can, see if this is something that makes sense for our county to, to take on. So if I have occurrence from my commissioners, or if I doubt, that's fine, we can die right here.
The first, wait, just a minute. First issue I have with this, Jay, is that the messages from your committee agreed that the Custer County Planning and Zoning Committee were requested by the Board of County Commissioners to explore and write a proposal for building codes and fire codes in the county. Is that maybe overreaching just a little bit to explore the issues of the building codes, and then they determine if they need to write one or not?
Well, you know, my feeling was, if we direct them to look at it and come up with a recommendation to us, what their recommendation is, I don't know. And, and I think that's why we have the committee to do it. I think we give them the direction and let them decide, let me just come back to them and say, this is, this is not a good idea, we don't support it, and then we, as a tribunal, can determine where we go from there. So my feeling is, I think we just put it in their lap and say, we want it done.
Dawn?
I'm going to say that I'm in favor of moving forward, because I would like to build a home in the future here, and I would like building codes in place.
I would maybe suggest we change that, where it's write a proposal to, and make a recommendation regarding building codes and fire codes.
I have no problem.
Jackie, does that, how do you feel about that?
I think it's a great idea, because I think the planning commission will have public meetings and-
Yeah, but they're going to make a recommendation to them. We're not saying that they have to develop-
But they might not even recommend a building code.
That's exactly where I'm, that's where I'm going, is that we don't say they have to write a proposal, they just make a recommendation to us.
Uh-huh, because they might recommend, no, you know, we'll just tweak the zoning, you never know what they're going to do.
Right. I'm fine with that, I just want to put it in their hands, so that this can move forward if it makes sense.
All right. I would say just as a, I don't think we need the official action, you've done it, and we talked about it, and-
Okay. Jackie, can I please ask you to-
Are you comfortable with that, Jackie? Then just take and go forward.
Thank you very much. Any questions, if anybody want to ask me? I've done a lot of work on it to this point.
Well, the other point that I've thought about, and I may be too much of a conservative sometimes on this, and public rights, private rights, but I think-
Exactly right.
Possible solution down the road might be that we have it as an option, and if you do build by zoning code, then it reflects on your deed that the building was so constructed, rather than making it, I'm, this is just a thought to go forward with. If you don't want to go by the building code, it doesn't show on your deed that you did. If you went by the building code, it shows on the deed that those are not the standards of a building.
I guess I would agree with that, but I'm in a situation now where, and don't ask me how this has even happened, but the lots out in Lake Dewey's all had deed restrictions on them, but no one followed them, and now they're trying to do the catch-up. So unless a tile company catches the deed restrictions, yeah.
But I, but I'm just saying-
And I agree, and then another thought is-
Not just a thought to take to your committee, is-
It's not going to help Wetmore at all at this point, because it's pre-zoning. But for future, where those houses burnt down along the bank, they would have to build them, you know, to building code, and probably get them up off that bank where that water is.
And then we would also have an issue or a change in our septic systems and so forth because of building codes.
Yeah, well, no, actually, if that wasn't pre-zoning down there, we wouldn't have those septics sitting where they are, because the new regs wouldn't allow it.
But what happens if a home is destroyed by an act of nature? Can they go back and reconstruct it on the same footprint and use the same septic systems up?
They can by an inspection, and if it's fire, and if they would meet the setbacks, and their septic is only the first five feet of the pipes only burnt, because that's where the methane stays. Do I know what methane is?
We know.
No, I think you know. Thanks, anyway.
Thank you, Jackie. And thank you for your help with this project, I really appreciate it.
Hey, let's move on to the next one then, is a school intergovernmental agreement. I reviewed this, I think it's pretty, that's what we had agreed on earlier. You folks had a chance to look at it?
Yep, yep, I'm fine.
Clint, you, you have reviewed these?
I prepared the resolution and the, the modified agreement to increase the salary in the respective percentages.
Do I hear a motion, or I will make a motion to approve Resolution Number 17-11. Resolution approving the renewal of an intergovernmental agreement between Custer County, the Custer County School District, and the Custer County Public Health Agency. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners for Custer County, a political subdivision of the state of Colorado, has been presented for its consideration, a proposed renewal of an intergovernmental agreement entered into July 5th, 2016, between Custer County, Custer County School District, and the Custer County Public Health Agency. And whereas said IGA has served the citizens of Custer County well for the past year, it provided critical nursing services to the school district and to the public health agency. And whereas, the board believes the renewal of said IGA would promote the safety, health, and welfare of the county and should be approved. Therefore be it resolved that the intergovernmental agreement between Custer County, Custer County School District, and the Custer County Public Health Agency entered into this 5th of July 2016 should be and is hereby renewed for another year, with the modifications concerning compensation expressed, compensation expressly approved as set forth in their renewal agreement.
I'll second the motion.
Any more discussion? And I will, we have the attached renewal agreement. Do I need to read that, Clint?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution, oh, wait a minute, this is the same thing. Oh, I just have two copies to sign, I'm sorry. All right. The next item on business, let's see, we have a staff meeting, but that's going to be-
That's going to be last. That'll be last.
How about the letter of support for the Tourism Board?
Okay, I had passed out prior to the meeting, the Colorado Office of Economic Development and International Trade is offering an initiative for brand building for communities. And what I have before me is a letter that I hope the commissioners agree. I'm going to read it, to whom it may concern. The Custer County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to support the collaborative efforts of the Custer County Economic Development Corporation, the Custer County Tourism Board, Custer County Chamber of Commerce, and Cliffs Action Revitalization Team for the grant application with OEDIT for rebranding Custer County. It is vital we use consistent branding to promote Custer County, as our economy depends on tourism, which provides jobs for our citizens and enables- on tourism, which provides jobs for our citizens and enables sustainable business. So I'm going to hope that my colleagues agree to support writing this letter.
Is this just a letter of support, or do we have any commitments at this point?
No commitments, just a letter of support.
I have no issue.
I'll make a motion, we accept and forward the letter of support, as requested.
I'll second it, that's stated.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Just need your signatures.
Okay, now, the next item I have on here is an update for the soil inspections regarding sewage.
Okay. We passed by vote, last board meeting, a board meeting before, that we would require soil inspectors to obtain insurance because it was the weak link in the processes of inspections. Since then, Clint spoke with Kit Shai, who came up with what appears to be an excellent alternative to this, and what it appears to be is that we would use engineered septic systems as opposed to the unmodified and the freestanding septic system. If this occurs, part of that system is the soil analysis, so that the general contractor puts in the engineered system, and Clint, if I'm not saying that's right, please hold me, because it's an engineered one, the engineer would have the insurance, so we don't have to have a separate soil analysis insurance. So when I spoke with Jackie about it, she said that this sounded like an excellent alternative, we checked with other counties, they're going towards the engineered septic systems. So what I would like to recommend is that we approve that the change should, and it needs to be done by resolution, according to planning and zoning, we made an error by a vote, that we have a resolution stating that effective 30 days from the date that the resolution is signed, that all septic, new septic systems that are put into the county are engineered systems, and that will end our liability that we've incurred for over all these years. So I think if everyone's in agreement with that, if Clint, would you prepare resolutions to that effect? I think I would ask to sign it, but we'll look at it when the resolution comes out. But it will solve our problem.
I guess the point that I would like to make to them maybe is that we officially reverse our proposal, and that in lieu of we're considering a resolution that would permit so-and-so, permit the engineered systems.
I'm fine with that.
I think we need to do something officially-
I was going to recommend you rescind that action that was done-
Right.
-requiring insurance versus soil analysis testing. So if you want to do that by motion, to rescind the earlier motion, then we can, I can have a proposed resolution for the June 8th meeting.
I'll make a motion, we rescind the action, and what meeting was that, the 5th or 6th? It wasn't Wetmore from before that?
No.
I don't remember what meeting that was.
So we rescind the action taken on whatever meeting that was requiring that we have liability insurance for sewage inspection, and that we will consider a resolution requiring only the, you said a certified engineer?
An engineered system is the technical term.
And I'll have the approval.
We will, we will prepare a resolution reflecting our endorsement of an engineer.
And I would like to state for the record that during the three years I've been a county attorney, when Kit Shai was a commissioner, this was something he advocated, knowing full well it would, it would take some income out of his pocket. He did PERC tests, and then they went to the soil analysis, and there were only four that were authorized to do it in Custer County. Two of those already have insurance, blanket insurance coverage, so that didn't affect them, and they have plenty of other things, like Cypher and Dave Neket, they do a lot of other work, and there are two that couldn't afford the cost of insurance, which one was Kit, and he, but he has advocated engineered septic systems for some time, so this isn't anything on his behalf, or on his part that's intended to make more money for him, he's going to lose money on this, but he thought it was a better way to go.
Do you want to hear a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion, that's stated.
Do you have additional discussion?
Could I, can I just say something? Because I worked at Neket's for three years with these, that will cost the homeowner, you know, probably-
Eight hundred.
Yeah.
To a thousand more dollars.
Yes, on their septic, just FYI, to have it engineered.
Right.
Well, at this point, we can have additional discussion on that, but at this point, we are just rescinding the motion that we made-
Right.
-the action that we took at a prior board meeting. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Do we have any other business other than the staff meeting at this time?
We do.
The sheriff had asked for another executive session on something else, it just came up today, and it wasn't appropriate to discuss it in the executive session we had earlier, so I recommended we wait until the end of the regular meeting.
And how would we, personnel, security, what would be-
Shannon, it was a personnel issue.
Personnel issue, yes, sir.
Okay.
Before we do that, can I, can I bring up two items that probably just would be open before we-
Sure.
-want to do that, is that permissible? Mr. Katnag had asked about earlier, and so I just wanted to bring up, so you'd mentioned about, we had an inmate at the jail that we had to fight for life. So this inmate had a, it was on a, you know, a Saturday evening, of course, and so I got a phone call from dispatch, and they, there was an inmate that was having a medical emergency, and I was listening to the phone call, and I had it on speakerphone, and my wife was sitting there listening because she's a nurse, but they, what they were explaining to me, my immediate thoughts were, this guy's having a stroke, and they had tried to get EMS to respond, but EMS was down the hill and they could not get a second crew to respond to the hot, and it had been 15 or 20 minutes already while they were trying to wait for an ambulance to come to the jail, and there was nothing. And so I'm listening to what's going on with this inmate, I mean, he's paralyzed on one side, almost unresponsive, I mean, he was blinking his eyes, but unresponsive otherwise. So a decision had to be made, and I was not going to just let him lay there in the jail and die, so I said, well, then you have to call for life for life. Well, it's caused a little bit of angst because EMS is a little ticked off at us because we called for life instead of just continuing to wait in the hopes that they would get a second ambulance up. So Alamosa County, that's an inmate that we were housing for, Alamosa County, and Alamosa said that they're going to cover the costs on that. Now, whether or not they do, I don't know, but it could be a big bill that comes to us because I had to make that call. And he was fighting for life at the Pueblo, and it turns out he wasn't having a stroke. Then he turned around the next night, had the same similar issue again, but this time we dealt with it differently, and we think it's a reason that he was playing to some degree, he's having some anxiety issues and so forth, but I just want you to be aware of that. Now, and I don't know if this is the right format to do this, but I'm a little frustrated with EMS at this point, maybe some of this is personal as well, but two days later, we had a roll over accident on Highway 96, an individual that was driving at high rate speed, intoxicated too, but rolled his vehicle, put it off Carita, so down in that hole that's on the southwest side there, down where all the rocks and the big cul-de-sac are, he dumped that truck down in there. How he wasn't hurt is beyond me, he was wearing a seatbelt, thank God, but when I say that he wasn't hurt, he wasn't hurt critically. But again, once again, couldn't get an ambulance crew. This time though, EMS, they had one ambulance that was down the hill, and they couldn't get a second crew, and so then the director of EMS was expecting dispatch to call every EMS member at home while they're trying to deal with this, and you know, and all the other things going on, to make personal calls to these people at home to try to rally somebody to actually show up to respond to this emergency. And that's not acceptable in my mind. And I'm a little frustrated that, you know, it seems to me, and I know that you guys have some purview of this, but it's a little frustrating to me that, you know, this county approved a mill levy some time ago so that we could raise more funds for EMS to deal with exactly this type of thing, and have people unpaid, you know, stand by or whatever to respond for a second ambulance. And I'm curious where that money's at, because they're not staffing two ambulances all the time, and someone's going to die because we're not doing this, and as a taxpayer, as the sheriff, I'm worried about somebody dying while I'm, while my folks are standing there waiting for an ambulance to get staffed up. But as a taxpayer, I'm wondering, where the heck is all this money, in this mill levy going for, to pay somebody two bucks an hour to sit at their house and be ready to respond if we need a second ambulance? I'm just curious about that, and I'll get off my bandwagon, but I just want you to know that we've had, just in the last, you know, 10 days, we've had two instances where we needed a second ambulance, and one wasn't there, to the tune of a fight for life from my jail to St. Mary Corwin in Pueblo. That's going to be a huge cost to this county, potentially. So that's one that I have food for thought.
If I could respond to that briefly-
Yes, sir.
-I have, maybe you two have been listening to, we have radios, and I do roam, I guess is the right word, on the radio.
Yes, yeah.
And there are numerous times that I've heard EMS calling for a second driver sometimes, a second crew sometimes, they'll get one, and then they'll roll down, and they can get to the point of asking the fire department for a driver.
Yeah.
And the volume of their calls, I think, has certainly increased in the last year and a half or two years, it seems like. So it's a, it's a public safety issue, I mean, what we want to do, I don't want this to start off as a witch hunt, but maybe we would like to ask that Delwyn and Jen come over and visit with us and give us an update on where they are, would that-
Yeah.
Would that seem appropriate without being a, I don't want to, you know, I don't-
No, I know, me neither, it's just-
And I think from their-
I'm just worried where the liability's going to come, when we can't, when we don't respond.
Or it's my dad who can't get that second ambulance, you know, I mean, that's, you know, it's real personal when it's your family.
That's right.
You know, in the olden days, we grew our own EMS up here, they were all volunteers, I was one of them, we got paid a stipend, and then they decided, well, that wasn't good enough, but we could always get a second crew because we all lived here. Now they bring crews up from below and pay them, and we've come into a better age now because we're not, have an all-volunteer crew, but we cannot get a second ambulance. I mean, I don't know how many times Dan and I have thought, maybe we should drive out there, not that we aren't certified anymore and even know what we're doing anymore, but the old-fashioned system worked way better than this one.
Well, I appreciate your comment, I think at this time, the best way to go about it is ask them to come in our next meeting maybe and give us an update, since it's been requested. And I know that ambulance was an extremely contentious issue, and I don't want to-
Right. I'm not looking for witch hunt either.
No, I'm not the horn is nestled off the wall until we need to.
No, but you deserve the answers.
Yeah, we just-
The community deserves it.
That's exactly what I was going to say. We all do that.
Okay.
Second, second point, and they have one. So mental health services and health services in the jail, probably, so we've had a repeated guest at our jail over the last, probably the last nine months now, he's been between us and Teller County, Pueblo County, Fremont County. He, and he's, has some significant mental issues to the point that for the month of May, we contracted with a company called, let me pull it up here, sorry. It's called NatCor Healthcare, so they're the ones that serve Fremont County, they do all the healthcare and mental services for Fremont County, and Sheriff Biker recommended that I talk to them, so we contracted, cost about $3,000 for the month of May for us to treat this individual, who still refused to take all of his meds, but they got him to take some of them. Finally, we were able to get him down to Colorado Mental Health in Pueblo, the state facility, he'll be there for some time. But what it did is appointed to a larger issue that we have, and that is, is we don't have any mental healthcare services in our jail. We don't have health services in the jail as well, we take them to the clinic and stuff. And so I've been visiting with the owner and proprietor of this business of NatCor, his name's Daniel, about contracting with him to provide those services, because as you can well imagine, the greater population of the jail has some, they're battling some type of mental health issues or substance abuse issues, one of the two, sometimes both, but rarely do you find someone in the jail that doesn't have one of the two. He gave me some proposals, and I'm going to go back to him because I can't justify the cost, but I mean, he gave the most reasonable one that I saw was $58,000 a year, which provides pretty much a lot of services, I won't go into that, but I don't know, you know, obviously, that's not in my budget this year to do it, but it's something that I would like to look at down the road because I think, you know, eventually the liability comes in. Is that something that maybe we want to talk more about around budget time, is that-
I think it's appropriate at that time. The second one that I would like to pursue, do you have, will you have a specific space over there that they can use for mental health counseling?
Oh, no.
It's that second floor you wanted.
I'm sorry?
It's the second floor you wanted.
Well, the reason I'm asking is that, and this goes with another issue with dovetails, if we identify this as a mental health treatment center, we can qualify for, I think, full funding to get fiber into the jail through the public health aspect of it.
Really?
This was brought up in our meeting in Keystone last week.
Okay, well, maybe-
So as we look, let's talk along that line and let's see, because if we could do that, that's helping solve one problem.
That would be a huge, that would be a big job.
But let's visit, all right?
Yeah, let's do it, okay. I just want to get back to him because our contract expires tomorrow for the treatment for that one individual, which is $3,000, but I, you know, because of their medical insurance and so on and so forth, you know, they can't be coming up and providing those services without some type of formal contract, and so, you know, I don't have that in my budget this year to do, and hopefully we don't have any other significant mental health issues, but it's something that we really need to look at being able to do down the road because as we're housing more folks from Alamosa and stuff, and ultimately, the housing fees that we're, would pretty much pay for it for us, but if we could do that through this, what you're talking about, that program, Bob, that would-
We can get, I was told rather directly that we could get the fiber to the point where we're offering mental health, so let's, let's-
Yeah, let's talk about that more than-
Put it in more detail, yeah.
Yes, sir.
But I think budget time is the appropriate time. Did you-
You answered it. I was going to suggest maybe the housing of outside prisoners would help fund that, and, no problem.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, I've got a motion on the floor at this time.
You do?
No, but I'm going to have.
Oh.
As soon as I get to the right page here.
While you're doing that, can I just give an FYI? Wester signed his contract with the Department of SEDON yesterday, it's a $1.3 million project, and it's going to be ripping up the road, so expect delays down Main Street and other avenues, I just wanted to ask that.
Does it start the 3rd, is that correct?
Yes, it's going to start within the next couple of days.
Yeah.
Within this week.
Right.
That's interesting, because that wasn't brought out in our meetings either as an ongoing project in a region or one that was planned for.
Let's find it.
Good, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Do you want our motion to go into executive, second executive session today regarding a personnel issue?
I'll make the motion, that's stated.
I'll second it. Commissioner Hood made a motion, seconded by Commissioner Katnag on the executive session, citing CRS 246402 regarding a personnel issue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries, I will declare the Board of County Commissioners meeting in recess, and we will convene as- the executive session. Thank you.
Is it permissible for...
She's passing notes to you now.
Getting all over the state, so I'm pretty fortunate to have that resource.
Okay, it's time. Do we have any business to come before the Board of County Commissioners?
Staff meeting.
Staff meeting. And you gotta make your statement.
But does a staff meeting are, as a part of our board or is that just a staff meeting?
It's part of the board.
Okay.
And you gotta make your statement.
Bring in the... Pardon me?
That we came out of the...
Yeah, I'm going to try. I thought you wanted a five-minute recess or something.
Probably, but I'll wait.
I attest that I am the chairman of the Custer County Board of Commissioners and confirm that the discussion remained on topic. No matters were adopted and no actions or decisions were made.
And that's a correct statement. As the county attorney, we stayed on topic to discuss a personnel issue that the sheriff had and there was no action taken.
Okay. Next item on the agenda will be the staff meeting. I doubt, holy smokes. We need to put you in a pair of chaps and a vest, Bud. You're looking kinda western.
Actually, I noticed.
You look good. Distinguished.
Extinguished. Is that what you said?
Extinct.
Extinct.
Extinct, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Brenda's making some phone calls because they didn't know what time to be here.
Donna, can you hand me those things back there?
We'll take a five-minute recess then.
Okay.
I would like to call our staff meeting to order at this time. I have no specified agenda, so at this time, I think we will open it. Do any of you have something you wanna think, Donna?
I just wanna bring everybody up to speed with what's happening with buildings and grounds on the outside and the inside. We are going to have some plumbing repairs done in the annex building upstairs and downstairs. In the bathroom that is used by planning and zoning and IT and by Donna, we're going to address the sink issue there. We're also addressing the basement here and the sink that's there. So you're going to see people inside the plumber doing his thing, okay? We have hired Darren Redman to mow the lawn of the facility, including the sheriff's He's also a past contract worker for the county and he's gonna get recertified on the weigh station so we can continue getting the income from the weigh station. We have been looking at, I know there's been some question about who's gonna change the light bulb. What I'm going to ask is that if you see things like that that need to be addressed, that Brenda be the keeper of that list and she convey it to me. And Darren will also be the person to take care of those needs. Yes, ma'am?
The other day, I had, my office went dark and the computers didn't work and a copier went off. And behind my door is telling me that there is a box upstairs that controls that part of my office.
There is. It's in my office.
And so I was told Mike is the one that control, knows about all of this. So I went and got Mike and Mike didn't know. So him and I went upstairs and they did, it was a fuse that was bad and they did have one. But in that case, couldn't we have a number so we can call him directly? Because something, you, sometimes, I mean, I would've been in the dark and I couldn't...
I must've been at lunch or something because I don't know anything about it, but I could've fixed that in two seconds.
And my vault went dark. I wonder if that was at the same time.
Yeah, you're on my fuse box too. And they're fuses, they're not breakers. And I've got actual fuses that I know where they're at. And I've showed my staff that I've had some recent turnovers, so maybe they didn't know. I don't know.
Well, no, they didn't. We finally found it.
I showed, yeah, because I showed them where it is and I can fix that in two seconds. I don't...
But that's just the instance I'm talking about, though. Something like that, you just can't wait around for a list. We put on the list.
Well, we'll have to look at it case by case so we can give you his number, his aware of that.
And I don't mind if it's that. I can't help with any of the other electrical. I have no idea why your fuse box is in my office.
I know, that's weird.
But it is and I've got fuses and I don't mind. I can fix that. And as far as light bulbs, I've already replaced two light bulbs in my office while Dave is gone because I don't wanna be in the dark for days, so I just got the ladder and the light bulb.
I fixed the toilet.
Who else is on, is on at your office besides a treasurer?
I don't know. We have them labeled.
In our office, it's called my closet, my office, my computer's in my office, and now there's the copier because it's in my office.
And then I think it's my office and the upstairs hallway.
Was it?
No, we didn't go out, but we're, but they're in that same fuse box.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's on the different fuse.
Did you document that for us, maybe?
It's upstairs, it's written down, I mean, on there.
Okay, but maybe after this, you can show me where that box is so I can let him know where that is in case that happens.
Yeah, that's fine. I'd be happy to, or Darren wants to come in, I can show him too.
Okay.
Not a big deal. But it's weird because it's an old electrical thing.
Oh, believe me, I have been through mostly every crevice of this building.
And I think when they did, the problem we have is Don Hammack passed away because Don knew all of it. And Don, there's like three different breakers and a fuse box. And Don knew where they all were and what they all controlled. I only know the one in my office. I don't know where any of the other ones are.
Well, we couldn't even figure out yesterday where to turn the outside water on. I mean, the building is pretty much a maze. It's a treasure. You go on a treasure hunt. So I just wanted to let you know so you'll see him, okay? You'll see Darren. He's gonna be doing the ones on Saturday, so he's not disrupting anything that happens, especially I know there were instances where there might be stones thrown. So we're not gonna deal with that. It's gonna happen on a Saturday, okay, that the building be taken care of. I know that Brenda had also sent emails on the cleaning and how many times you would like your office cleaned. And I just wanna bring you up to date that Cindy is also requesting that the SAR building be on the list because that's not being cleaned. So we're looking at the annex, the airport, the SAR building and this building. And I've had three vendors in. We just got all the quotes and now we're looking at the times. So we've gotta make this decision ASAP so that they can begin. And I just wanna say, because you're all living in here, this building has not had a deep clean for years. So we're gonna work in a deep clean by department and I'll let you know what that schedule is. The carpets have not been cleaned for over six years. I think we talked about that. So even to bring a cleaning service in here, going around here, everybody's got stuff on their floors, okay? So if we provide the service of shampooing the rugs, you're gonna need, if you want your rug cleaned, I guess I should ask that first, okay? Then we may need to put things in different areas just for the time being to have that service provided. But we wanna do that kind of cleaning on the weekends so it's not disruptive. We're also looking at bringing in these cleaning people after office hours. So we're not dealing with trying to have our public in here and having different motors going on at different times, okay? So I just wanted everybody to know. It has been a process trying to get these quotes, but they're all in and we've started on the outside and hopefully the inside will start ASAP. So I'll make everybody aware of when that's gonna happen, okay? But I did, if you haven't submitted, Brenda gave me a copy here of when people wanted what. So if you haven't turned that in, I'm asking that you turn it in to me as soon as possible.
I just have a comment. I would like my counter to be cleaned every day because it is just, it's nasty. People kind of lean on it all the time and trash emptied every day. And same thing with the bathrooms. Public bathrooms need to be cleaned every day. You can't do that like three times a week because the public's in there all the time.
Did you put that on your list for me? Okay.
And that, that's, I didn't put that on my list, but yeah.
Okay, so there may have to be that. I mean, we were looking, we were just, I'm just gonna say to you, price-wise, the three fit the category, but if we need that, maybe others don't get done, like the courthouse, we had heard didn't need to be the courtroom except for once a month. So let me look at everything, okay? And we'll go from there. But if you put that down, it will be addressed, okay?
Will Darren be watering the lawn too?
Yes. As soon as we figure out where the source is. If you know that, the water source downstairs, we could not find the turn on. So he was contacting Round Mountain. Do you know where that is, Kip?
Well, for a price, I might be able to divulge.
Concentration.
Okay. But I just, I know that's been on everybody's list of questioning and knowing when that's gonna happen, so it's being addressed.
It's not about the cleaning, but on the repairs, I didn't hear the man's upstairs bathroom on that list?
It is on the list.
It is on the list.
Yes.
Okay. And then I guess I need to get added on to Brenda's list because, no, the telephone's still not working.
The telephone?
The telephone on the other side. My telephone works fine, but the other one on the other side of the room goes in and out without any warning, whatever. We've been replacing cords and everything else, but...
Did something get disturbed because Robin's ever cleaned it?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. But it did, yeah, I've not been here for the last, yeah. But I did make Sarah try to note when it does go out, does your display still stay on? And she said yes, but she loses dial tone and the connection is lost. I don't know what that means.
The display stays on?
The display stays on sometimes, not always. But yeah. So she camps at my desk to make phone calls.
Okay, so shock, is that under you?
We can try to replace the phone first and see if that's causing it. Other than that, if it's a wiring problem, we're gonna have to bring somebody in.
Okay. Okay. So we'll address that for you, Beverly.
Okay. Is there gonna be any opening and closing responsible person for security reasons? In the old days, we always had the maintenance man or cleaning person always opened and always closed the doors, made sure it was open and closed.
When you say the old days, that had to be before Mr. David Post, so you're looking at over six years ago? Okay.
Since you guys, since he's on, we're going at 2:00 or whatever.
Right.
The offices have been asked to be responsible. Now, I've been taken upon our office to open it, but there are times when you just, you forget about the time. You look up, it's 9:00 and somebody's knocking on the door. That just happens unless you have somebody that is strictly responsible for that.
Right. I'm gonna say that if we get a cleaning crew in here, it's gonna be at the time of closing. So they're gonna be responsible. We'll try to have them come in at the time of the hours and they would ultimately be responsible for locking up and for closing.
For closing. Well, why do you do for opening?
I don't know yet. We'll have to address that. Can't say.
Well, and on days when there's court, I mean, court could let out at 9:00 and the cleaning people could've came and went long sent. I mean, some, you know...
But doesn't the court take the responsibility of locking it down?
Yeah, we always lock it.
And we always lock it.
Yeah, Mike said, told me that he, when that happens, that he goes around and looks at everything.
Yeah, that was my understanding is that they cover that.
So that front door is a killer. And I also talked about changing the keys, so I'm trying to do one thing at a time.
Yeah, my key doesn't even work on that front.
On the front door, yeah. So it's gonna be rekeyed for the front and the back, so. But I don't have that answer yet. Sorry.
Who's opening it now?
Well, we have been, except for this one.
You guys open because you're... She's opens it in my office. I've been closing it for four years.
For four years.
Because then nobody else would do it. Lynn had a very came and said, would you please, please do it? I can't find anybody else to do it.
Well, and we actually did it for a while, but a lot of times, we have customers right at 4:00.
So Lynn came and did, could you please do it? Because I can't find anybody else.
Could you guys continue for a little while until we figure out?
But just understand, if you get a complaint that we didn't open it by 9, till 9:00, it's because we literally forgot because it's really not been our responsibility to unlock it. So I have a note on my desk, but sometimes you don't see it.
Well, I'm gonna say to you that it is a bizarre way to open and close that door. I never saw anything like it.
The screwdriver?
The screwdriver.
Yeah, I know. That's how we close it every day.
Okay.
It's insane.
It is. It is. So thank you for your comments and for opening and closing.
I used to work in banks, they're easier to secure than front door.
Right. And for those that are present, we are gonna have our workhouse, our workshop tomorrow at 1:00 with Dennis Hunt. Please understand that was the only time that Dennis could really come down here. He's taking off and we're trying to keep with a timeline of getting the policies approved, okay? So that we can begin for July 1. That's really the goal. And when he comes tomorrow, we're also gonna discuss when to have our work session on budgeting. We wanna have evaluations done. This will be discussed tomorrow. Since evaluations have not been done in the past, we're looking to do them in a certain period of time annually prior to budgeting. That way, when you come and you sit at the table with the commissioners, you've got some information that you could give us regarding your staff, okay? So that's what we're trying to do.
So does that mean we're looking at merit pay rather than across the board or...
Merit pay, that, believe it or not, that's been in your policy manual prior to what we've been doing.
What we've been doing basically, I think, and help me out here, Kip, that we approve a certain level and then we give it to your, it's your budget to do with as you see fit.
The reason I'm asking is, and don't take this personally, but commissioners come and commissioners go. And every time we get a new group of commissioners, they say, we want you to budget this way. When you guys told us that, that was the first we'd ever heard of it. The prior group hadn't told us that. And every time we get a new group, the way that the budgeting is done...
I don't anticipate, I don't anticipate your final budgeting to come in. Maybe I'm speaking on a turn until somewhat in a normal routine. This is to start the process.
Yeah, just start the process.
Just an information process, not as a, you gotta have a deadline by that time.
Right. But no, I'm just saying, you said, you know, you give us X amount and then we decide how to split it. That was just something we were told about two years ago. It was the first time they heard that. No other board gave us the flexibility to do that. And it changes, or at least if they did, they never told us about it because that was the first I heard of it. So every group of commissioners wants it done a little bit different way and that's fine. We just need to know how you want it done.
Well, and that's what part of the process is. We're gonna learn that too, okay? But we're all gonna be together in it so that you know that. And it's, it's, the evaluations are a tool, okay? It's a tool. You know, I know that I, I have a concern with the assessment that's happening in 2018. So it may not be that we can do something across the board or the way that things have been done in the past. So we just have to be open to what can we do?
Yeah.
Okay. So I just wanted everybody to be aware of that. And for those, I know, JD, you mentioned you may not be able to come tomorrow. I know you mentioned you may not be able to come, but just get me any questions so that I can get those answers to you, okay?
Yeah, I'm gonna do my best.
And this is a first, first of a series, Edie. I mean, we'll take what we have in this meeting tomorrow and we may have some additional discussions, some other things to come out of it.
Yeah, it's a work session.
Because it's not, it's not a thou shalt.
Right.
Well, it can't be. It's just a work session.
Well, but I mean, in terms of the work session, the purpose of it is identify the stuff we may need, and things that won't work and reasons they won't work.
Everybody okay? So we just, you know, this is, we haven't really had a, a staff meeting since our first day of January 10, and just wanted to see if there were any other issues to talk about. Yes?
I have the easiest, most simple request, which is the no smoking sign at the back door is laying on the bench. It's not on the door, it's just laying on the bench. So it just needs to be put up.
I know, I'm eating raw fish.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, when I went around looking at the building, JD, you showed me that door upstairs.
Yeah.
My God, that's an awful safety hazard.
I know. Yes, ma'am, I totally agree with you.
Okay, so.
That's why I made sure I pointed it out.
Thank you. I'm not quite sure how to address that.
I'm not sure either. I've been debating that one for a while.
Okay, well, it's, it's noticed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But I, I don't have an answer either, so.
Well, thank you. I don't know if anybody else has anything to contribute.
True. Jay?
Yes?
All right, one question about these, these doors have new locks on them.
They do.
And since 1990, I've had access to this office, to use it as county surveyor, because I don't need an office very often. I come in and use the law books after hours. I use the Wi-Fi. I make phone calls from here. I've met people on county surveyor issues, and I've done it in this room and off-hours, so that it didn't bother anybody. And now I don't have access to it. And I'm wondering about that. I'm the only elected official that isn't provided in an office by the county, and it's ridiculous for me to have an office and take up space and require a desk and all that. I just do need a place to meet people, and it's handy to use the Wi-Fi and the law books. So I was kind of wondering why it was suddenly locked down.
I think that's a valid request, and I would recommend it.
It's a valid request. I just need to know, are filing cabinets locked back there? And we also have our county commissioner's mail here?
So am I a security risk then?
No, I just need to know, are those cabinets locked?
This is not locked. This is all public information.
Okay.
I think we're going down. I don't want to go down this road. I think we have a trust issue here, and I fully trust Kit. I've been a very sound public official for many, many years. And if we can come in here, Kit, and provide you on the reasonable timing.
It's not very often that you need to spot.
And then go forward. I have, I think that's the appropriate way to go.
I believe we have an extra key that Mike has.
Okay.
Okay? So we just have to put you on that list.
Do I go sign up with him to be on the list, or will you do that?
He's got, yeah, he, I don't know that he's in today, and he's got them locked in a cabinet that I don't have access to.
Okay. Which I'll inform him. I hope he can do that. Thank you.
Yep. So that being said, if you're coming in here after hours, you did have a key to get in the doors also?
To the back door.
To the back door, okay. So I just have to make sure when we change.
Yeah, actually, I got that email, and I responded to Brenda. Told her what keys I had and how long I had them and how I was using them.
Okay. I just want to make sure, when those change, that you also get them.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay. Good. Thank you all for what you do.
I have one thing. Communication. I just would like to have better communication between you guys and all of us. Just like the email that, did you email, JD sent an email out to, that both of us had sent out about the meeting tomorrow. We never heard anything until yesterday. And it would be nice just to, if you could just shoot an email back and say, no, the CPS guy has to be here on that day, so that I could reschedule my appointment a little bit quicker.
That's probably my fault, because I've been out with some, my wife had some surgeries, and we had a recent death in the family, and I should have gotten that information sooner, and I'll see that we get more of that information.
Well, I just, yeah, I just, I think that more communication would be good between us. Okay. So that when we send an email, we at least give a yes or a no, or whatever, okay?
And there's acknowledgement.
Acknowledgement that we got.
Yes.